Cheryl, the rule, please.
Joe Burden.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
Peter Lewis. Laura O’Connell. Neil Tohman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here. All right, thank you, Cheryl. Welcome to the second half of 2024 and the July meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. Hopefully, you’ve all seen the agenda. We’ve got a couple of public hearings tonight. Let’s start with the Minister of Trivia. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from June?
I might take one.
Thank you, Dennis. Second. Thank you, Neil. Any comments, corrections, or edits? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Minutes approved. We received a couple of pieces of correspondence related to the vast application which is not on for this evening. I want to reiterate something I think I’ve said once before, maybe Steve will reprimand me for this. We’ve also received anonymous correspondence. I have actually in the, I don’t know, over a decade have been on this board, not received more than a couple of pieces of anonymous correspondence that are mostly tied to this property. So if the author of said anonymous correspondence is listening somewhere, I’d like to suggest he or she, please, put their name on the thing. It is not great in a democracy to have people secretly spewing invective, and this correspondence was filled with some strong language and strong comments. At least for one, discount heavily the comments of someone who is not willing to stand and tell us who they are and why they’re, what their standing is. So, you know, we read everything. I can guarantee the public, we read every piece of correspondence, but if someone doesn’t want to put their name on the thing, it actually makes us quite sus- quite suspect. So with that comment, hopefully, everyone’s read the correspondence, and we’ll bring VASTA back to the, for next month, or at least next meeting. We’ll get to the August, whether we have an August meeting later on. Maybe this board deserves a little vacation. Anyway, we’ll pick that up at the end. First up is a public hearing, which I believe is the fifth public hearing in the eighth day of public hearings that we’ve had over the last 40 years for the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. So Cheryl, would you read the notice, please?
The planning board of the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 18, 2024, at the planning board’s regular monthly meeting, starting at 7:30 PM at the Phillips Town Town Hall, 238 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, 10516, to consider the following application. Garrison Properties LLC, Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, 2015 Route 9, Garrison, New York, 10524, tax map number 60.1-59.2 and 59.3. Garrison Properties LLC and HVSF, the applicant, are seeking site plan approval for a permanent open-air theater facility with seating for approximately 500 patrons and related uses and improvements as permitted in the Garrison Cultural Conservation Plan Development District as per the proposed plans now on file with the town planning board. In relation to the application for site plan approval, the applicant is seeking a special permit allowing the disturbance of slopes greater than 20% under Town Code 175-36B7. At the public hearing, the planning board will accept comments from the public regarding the request for grant of a special permit allowing the disturbance of slopes greater than 20% under Town Code 175-36B7 dated at Phillips Town, New York, this 20th day of June 2024. Neil Zuckerman, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Steve, would you mind just commenting on why we’re having this narrow public hearings? I think even though our listeners may have been paying attention at last episode, maybe the gap of the month, they’ve forgotten.
Sure, Neil. The project under consideration is the theater facility for the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, and the proposed use is subject to site plan approval. This board noticed and held a public hearing on the site plan for the project. One aspect of the project, and I’m sure the board is aware, but you’ll hear again tonight, very small aspect of it, is some development in what technically constitute steep slopes under the Town Code. And the board should have, but did not, include a notice for the special permit required for the steep slope development in the notice of public hearing which was published for the site plan. So the site plan public hearing is over. However, the special permit for the steep slope development also requires a special here, a public hearing, so we’re holding a separate public hearing tonight on the request for a steep slope development special permit. That’s the issue that’s before the board, that’s what the public hearing is on.
Okay, and if you wouldn’t mind just going one step further, and can you just remind those in attendance today and those listening where the rest of the application is?
Wow.
Well, because I think we’re going to come out of this hearing, and we’re going to basically move to complete the approvals. I just want, it may be helpful for you to-
Yes, it’s no problem, Neil. It’s not that big, actually. The project required secret review, of course, zoning change, subdivision for a three-lot subdivision, site plan approval, and the special permit for the steep slopes. Secret review was completed by this board in a finding statement several months ago. I don’t recall, November? November, thank you. The zoning change was granted in March, I think, and the subdivision approval was granted last month. That leaves two approvals outstanding, one being the site plan for the theater facility, which, again, the public hearing is closed, and the board is just deciding on what kind of resolution they may adopt in regard to it. And then, of course, there’s the steep slope special permit, which is under review tonight.
Thank you. All right, so Adam, why don’t you give us the intro on the steep slope topic, which I assume you’re going to talk about narrowly? And if there’s anything else you want to say, feel free.
Sure. So, thanks, Steve, for setting that up. The steep slopes permit involves a very small portion of the 100-acre property. It’s .3 acres in three different areas where the project needs to even out the grading in order to make the edge of the slope meet the areas that are being regraded into a more natural landscape. Some of these areas were steep slopes because of the grading for the golf course. We looked into the possibility of using retaining walls instead of disturbing those steep slopes areas, and that would have actually resulted in more disturbance, so we’re asking the board to approve this small area of disturbance.
All right. Cheryl, you guys, thank you. So, I’m not sure, Tim, do you want to speak on this topic?
Probably just signed it.
I think you just signed it. So the public hearing is now open to discuss steep slopes for the Shakespeare Festival application. Does anyone want to speak? Farmer Saunders, do you want to speak? You’re on the list here.
I think-
Would you just come to the mic if you don’t mind?
I was in Saunders, ran the thin or Williams Town for some years, getting quite a lot of summer stock. See, please let me respond. Okay, all right, keep talking clear anyway. Anyway, the-
Are you applying to the Shakespeare Festival? Because you’ve got the guy who puts on the shows right there.
I can’t hear you.
Forget it. Keep going.
Okay, in any event, I walked up to the site at this time of day, which is when the performances tend to start. Someday, the Shakespeare Festival may become more, a little more honest and actually do some Shakespeare, but that’s a whole different thing. The serendipity of putting the tent, reusing the tent from Baskerville and placing it on the unused tennis courts and swimming pool area is a reasonable and very efficient approach. The new site up on the tip, top of the windy ridge, I took a beautiful photograph of the sunset, which is what the playgoers will see. They will not see the action, they will see the mountains and the sub, and the sunset at the time of the curtain raising of most shows, even if they’re, even if Shakespeare does rejoin us. I read here the 225-seat indoor theater seems to be disappeared. There are 12 months in the year, three or four of them with snow. It would be probably much wiser to use the glorious space which is used for rehearsals, the X Squash Court. It’s a wonderful, small theater with great acoustics and doing small musical comedies and limiting, limited-size productions as in Off Broadway in downtown New York would make a great deal of sense and extend the season to be reasonable and coordinate the plays with the restaurant and the hotel. So anyway, right now, they’re heading off in the wrong direction, spending huge amount of money for a site which is impossible to actually perform in, and the existing site isn’t too bad. So I would, I would say that as far as breaking the zoning laws with lots of housing for the cast or crew or whatever, we just can’t have spot zoning. It’s just useless, and it’s very dangerous. So anyway, we could do good, we could do great shows in the present tent, we could do very good shows, even better, in the indoor theater, and we could coordinate with the restaurant to the profit of everybody. So there we are. I think it’s time we had some hearings on the practicality of this situation, and it’s, there are so many other things that have taken place on that property, the old Garrison Horse Show from the 30s and early, and 41, various skiing events, an actual golf course, and so much, so much better use of the property. So there we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. All right. Brenner, do you want to speak? Come on, come on up, please. And just as a reminder, despite the history lesson that Sandy provided us, we’re talking about the special use permit specifically and frankly only, given the 100-plus speakers we’ve had over the last four years on many other related topics. So please, sir.
I don’t know if this is too late, being that you’re talking about just one particular thing, but it’s a public. I’m Jay Brenner. I live at 29 Snake Hill Road. I live across the street from the Garrison. I overlook the 17th Hall. When I bought my house, there was a golf course, and I didn’t know that it was going to turn into this. We love the idea of having the HVSF as our neighbors. There has been little to no intrusion to date in either noise or traffic flow. We have gone to some of the shows and have enjoyed the performances and the people who work there, but I ask you to consider two things moving forward. Please place the theater lower on the ridge to reduce the potential of noise pollution. Here is my concern. The testing of the sound, which I was told was done to code at street level behind some bushes and trees, is not accurate based on the height of my house and where the new site is being planned. If they did new testing with the microphone receptors on my deck, I am sure there would be different results, and if the sound does not pass the test either now or in the future, there should be money put aside, and here’s my favorite word, to mitigate the situation moving forward, not just wait to see what happens. I have been to the site many times, and I really don’t understand why they can’t just plan the theater just a little bit lower so that the sound pollution does not emanate across the entire place. The other big, big concern that I have as a first responder and as a person that lives right on the corner of Travis, this is a terrible idea to put an actual traffic light there. Yes, there has been a fatality at this intersection here or there, but speaking to first responders and engineers and police, the traffic light could cause more accidents and more fatalities. You have an acceleration lane on both the north and south side of the intersection with speeding cars trying to get ahead of each other, and then a red light. The potential of severe accidents increases. Also, during the day, the heavy construction vehicles that would now have to break would cause an enormous amount of noise pollution from the Jake brakes and the air brakes. I have lived here now for almost four years, and there has only been one fender bender in all the time, so why rock the boat now? The impact of the light is just overwhelmingly wrong, more potential accidents and a lot more noise pollution all day. In conclusion, as a neighbor, HVSF has been great to date. They are taking care of their grounds inside their stone walls and even out on the roads on Snake Hill, and I thank them for that. But please consider these two points are of paramount importance. The light will change the peace and serenity of this part of Garrison day in and day out, even when there are no performances the other nine months of the year. And where there are no performances for the three months, and when there are performances for the three months, many of your neighbors will be hearing all the actors and the amplified music. I skipped something here. In my opinion, which is just, you know, nobody, but if you just put a light at that intersection instead of a traffic light, it would mitigate the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. I don’t want to put Glenn or Adam or anyone else on this. Thank you. No, any more public speakers? Anyone else want to speak? I’ll just keep it on per se. Adam or Glenn, I don’t know if you want to respond to the noise testing, because there’s a whole mitigation strategy. You’ve got a fund, you’ve got, I think it’d be worthwhile, given that this is your probably closest neighbor going forward. It probably wouldn’t be the world’s worst thing to remind as the topic has been raised, and we’ve talked about it a number of times, but why don’t we just put the facts on the table while Mr. Brenner is sitting here?
Sure. I don’t have the exact, you know, noise compliance plan in front of me, but generally speaking, HVSF is required for a number of years after the theater is built to have a noise mitigation plan or noise complaint process in place where neighbors can call the town or call HVSF and register noise complaints that will result in noise monitoring being done during similar conditions as to when, when the complaint was raised. So if there was a wedding and a theater performance, there would be a study the night of a wedding and theater performance in accordance with the town noise code, which measures noise levels at the, at the property line. If it turns out that there is a violation of the noise code, HVSF is required to mitigate that, to figure out, you know, what’s going on, and if anything can be done to reduce the noise associated with those events so that they’re compliant.
Great, thank you. Is that clear? Okay. All right. And you want to cover the traffic light at all?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, you know, there’s already very, that signal is the intersection where traffic is coming out of Travis Corners is already an unacceptably slow wait for the people who are coming onto Route 9, and the light will help that. And I wanted to note also, I think we’ve talked about this in the past, but the light is not going to be one that changes from green to red all the time. It’s only activated when someone is either coming out of Shakespeare or coming out of the road across. So most of the time, that will be green for the traffic on Route 9.
Okay. Generally, don’t do a back and forth, but since you’re the closest neighbor, I figure it’s not, not a bad thing for you to get your answers. Any other, before we close the public hearing, anything else you guys want to ask?
That’s just a Travis corner. How does that line up with the other one? Does that actually line up? It’s a-
Aaron?
Yeah, my understanding is that it’s an actuated signal, right? That’s what we were told, and the applicant’s traffic consultant explained that, and that’s in my memo from, from June. It remains green on Route 9 unless the camera detects a vehicle waiting on Snake Hill Road or Travis Corners Road. That’s the response they provided, and that’s, you know, the signal’s currently under review by DOT. It’s in Phase 2 process, so that fully actuated proposal is in front of DOT as well.
So state DOT must approve it anyway. It’s their, their road.
Correct.
We mentioned a number of times about how dark the corners, when we live there, we really have to watch, especially when you make the left turn to the south. Just wondering about that. I guess that’s another issue. How does a person in the community get a traffic, get a street light?
I’m, yeah.
It’s a different issue.
Different issue. Anyway, not my department, but you have the town, the deputy supervisor of the town who could take it under advisement. That’s a county road, though, I believe, Snake Hill, so that may be a whole other topic. Anyway, anybody else, any more comments for this public hearing? Going once, going twice, motion to close the public hearing?
I’ll move.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Okay, public hearing is now closed, which I guess I’d say the last and final public hearing. And so Steve or Ron, what is our next, and I think frankly, final order of business related to Shakespeare?
Yeah, okay, as has been indicated, you had an obligation to conduct and to close a public hearing on the special permit. The public hearings on the site plan itself were previously closed. At the board’s direction, a draft approval resolution has been provided for the board’s consideration tonight, now that the hearing’s been closed. So that’s before you, and it grants both site plan approval for the Phase 1 of the site improvements that have been proposed and studied through the environmental process, and it specifically grants the special permit required for that very small area of steep slopes disturbance that’s the subject of tonight’s hearing.
Thank you. Ron, I mean, Steve, you want to add anything?
No, the resolution’s been approved by myself and by all consultants. I believe it’s been circulated to the board before the meeting, so the board’s obligation now is to consider and if it’s so advised, vote upon the resolution for approval of the special permit and site plan.
Okay, so I’m just going to add one remark before I ask for any comments from my colleagues. So just for purposes of incredibly clarity for the public, this is approving the first phase of the site plan. I will read, that includes, quote, “The installation of the new open-air theater cluster with seating capacity of 500 patrons, including the back of the house concessions, pump house, restrooms, administrative space. The new parking lot will be installed with proposed walkways, associated grading, lighting, stormwater management.” And then Phase 1 will also include intersectional improvements on Route 9 that we were just talking about. That is Phase 1 in what’s being approved, nothing beyond that for the site plan. You guys both want to say something?
That’s correct.
Okay. So that’s what we’re, that is what the resolution has in it, that’s what we’re approving, so just for clarity of sake for everyone who’s focused on what we’re approving. So fellow board members, comments or questions on the resolution as shared? Go.
Well, I’m going to vote for it, but I just wanted to say that I really hope that the Shakespeare, that it doesn’t make me feel particularly comfortable for the neighbors that the, that the standard is whether or not the noise blows the Town Code. I mean, I would hope very much that the Shakespeare Festival would respond to neighbors, even if it doesn’t blow the Town Code for noise, just for comedy, community feeling. So I, I’m just down the road really hoping for that. And also, you know, with special purpose, with any concerts that are done similarly, that they be rare, that they be not too loud, consistent with the rural cares of the community. So I just wanted to put those things on the record, that I hope that the way, the same way that the Shakespeare Festival, I think, has been very responsive to the community throughout, I hope that will continue.
Thank you. Others? Okay, motion to approve the resolution?
I’ll make that motion.
Thank you, Dennis. Second? Yeah, someone’s got to second it. All right, Joe seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Motion passes. Any abstentions? Motion passes. So before everyone says how they feel, I just want to say a couple of words. This is the second-longest project we’ve had in front of us. It’s actually half the duration of the Hudson Highlands Reserve. It’s the largest project, I think, that’s been done since only my 20, 30 years in town, and I wish you a lot of luck with what you’re doing. I will say that the world, certainly this country, has been a lot of turmoil in the last few weeks and months, very unsettling moments. Certainly, most I’ve been, I wasn’t alive during the, oh, yes, I was, actually, during Watergate, so this is not as bad, but it’s an unsettling moment. So the national level is a little unsettled, even the state level. Serving on the MTA board, I can tell you, things have been unsettled on the state level as well, and so there’s discomfort there. And I’ve been looking for comfort for my government, and I will tell you, at least from my humble perspective, this board, I feel, has been doing its best to bring some comfort. We’re all appointed by our town authorities, but we have done the needs of this town. We have balanced those of the powerful with those of the public. We’ve weighed property rights against community rights. We’ve deliberated in public. I think we’ve tried to be as transparent as possible. We’ve given voice to the people. It’s yielded, I think, reasonable compromise, and I appreciate what’s been done to date. I think we’ve arrived at a fair approach. Some of you may be unhappy, others may say it took too long. I’m confident that we did exactly what we should have done. We weighed, we assessed, we deliberated, we worked with experts, and I believe we got to the, the right place. That’s what government’s supposed to do. Maybe you can take a little, little bit of comfort from our 10,000-person town about what we’ve done. I want to thank John Van Tassel and Bob Flaherty for their support and being good stewards of this board, and I hope you are good stewards of this property. And as Heidi said, we look to you being very important, valuable neighbors, whether to the rest of us or just to the Brenners, but we trust in you and we trust in the approval we’ve just made. So good luck, and thank you.
Thanks very much, and thank you for the hard work.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, so if anyone wants to leave, we’re going to move on with our business. Next up, and I’m going to pass it to Dennis to do the, the public hearing for the Desmond Fish Library.
Thank you. Cheryl, can you read the notice on, do we have a signing sheet for this section?
Yeah, there, you can just ask. There wasn’t much on it.
Okay. Could you just read the notice, just so everybody’s aware, please?
The planning board of the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 18, 2024, starting at 7:30 PM at the Phillips Town Town Hall, 238 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, 10516, to consider the following application. Alice Curtis Desmond and Hamilton Fish Library, 472 Route 403, Garrison, New York, 10524, tax map number 71.6-1-12 and 71.6-1-13. Project, major project, construction of an open-sided roofed pavilion dated at Phillips Town, New York, this 20th day of June 2024. Neil Zuckerman, Chair.
Thank you.
With the applicant’s representative, Margaret, I’d like to say a few words, brief words on the project, just to recap.
Sure.
Thank you.
So the library is proposing to build an open pavilion that will also have one area that’s enclosed so they can have storage for their book fair. In order to capture the grading, any of the runoff that may come towards this building, we’re regrading the hill slope to bring, to bring the rainwater down where it’s naturally coming. We’re going to have to cut part of the, of the parking lot and repave it in order to provide a curb along the edge so that water doesn’t run off from the parking lot to the new building. There is proposed landscaping along the edges and some trees. Other than that, there’s no additional disturbance on the site, there’s no additional parking, this is an extension of the library. The pavilion will also have some solar panels on the roof, and it will charge a battery storage, which is in the library, to provide electricity to the library building. electricity to the library building. Um, and I think that's about the extent of the project.
Thank you. Uh, we did not have any sign-ins. Anybody in the, uh, audience want to comment regarding this project? Okay, uh, any comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, well, so we gotta let, we got, um, this information from the conservation board about the drainage. And I was just, yeah, I was just wondering if, um, you guys are gonna do that, like route it behind the pavilion or what, or under or whatever?
I don't think they understood that we had already added that to the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the plan does pick up any of the rainwater that's coming in this direction and directs it around the building.
About around the back?
Around the back.
Not under?
Not under.
Okay. Thanks.
Back into the stream or?
Back into.
Yeah, I thought that's what you guys told us when we went for the site visit, that it was gonna go around the back.
Yeah.
So like, to the extent that there's, you know, frogs and amphibians in there, they're not shoved under.
It's intermediate.
It's not really, there's, it's not a swale. It's, it's just a lawn that the water goes across. It, it's not habitat. There's, there's habitat.
You'd be surprised.
There's habitat down here.
There's frogs all over my front yard and in the street in front of my house. I mean, I just, why not put it around the back where it's open? Rather than under. But I thought you were putting it around.
There's an existing catch basin that stays. The water will traverse around the building.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Um, as Neil would put it, uh, any other questions, any comments, sir? Would you mind stepping up?
Sure.
If you, if, if you can.
I looked at the, uh, staked-out plan of the pavilion. I live fairly close to the library.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you identify yourself?
Frank DeAngelis.
Thank you.
I live on 9D. Uh, I looked at the staked-out plan and it looks like a very good project. And, uh, will expand the activities of the, of the library. The only concern I have is access to the library. I heard some of the parking lot is being taken out. I don't know how much. Uh, my concern is whether the library is assuming a path or trail along 9D as projected by the Phillips Town Trail Committee to access this pavilion. And if they are, that's what I have concern of. So, uh, is, is anybody that comes to this pavilion or goes to activities in this pavilion, will they be gone by vehicular traffic only? Or do they expect that there will be some kind of trail or path or sidewalk along 9D to access this?
Okay. And, that's it?
Okay.
Comment. Margaret, would you like to address that, uh, the, the pathway on 9D, if it's a future project or something, it's not part?
Yes, it's future.
It's not part of this, okay.
Uh, so the parking is not being eliminated. We have to cut the parking lot and repave it. We have to regrade it and pave it. So there will only be temporary loss of parking. There's no loss of parking. It's just gonna be re, regraded and paved again. So there will be the same amount of parking there was. And there is no provision in this plan to put any pedestrian path along Route 9D.
So as a matter of point, the accessibility to the site would remain the same as it is now?
Yes, the access to the site is not changing. There's no additional access. There's no additional access points, same entrance.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, um, if I'm not mistaken, now would be the time to make a decision on closing the public hearing. Am I correct with that? I didn't bring my manual with me, so. Can I, can I get a?
I'll make that motion, motion to close the public hearing.
To make, uh, to close. Can I get a second on that? Any abstentions? Any, uh? Okay, uh, let's vote on it then. Aye.
Aye.
I say aye.
Did, so, it's over here?
Yeah, okay.
Normally you say any objections, any abstentions.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry.
Objections or abstentions?
Are there any objections or abstentions from the board?
None, good.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I appreciate that.
Now you, you need to move on to consider whether you want to have resolutions of approval prepared, uh, for this project.
Uh, that would be, uh, asking for a motion or not, Steve, uh?
So you might want to hear from your engineer first, bud.
Okay. Ron, I'm, I'm sorry, for some reason, I'm not hearing it clear from down there.
And what's, it's exactly at that point in the process. The, uh, board has addressed their statutory administrative requirements. And now with the conduct of the public hearing being accomplished and closed, you're now ready to consider whether you want to have resolutions prepared on the project.
Okay, uh, and that would require a motion, obviously. Okay, can I ask for a motion to prepare a resolution, for Ron to prepare a resolution?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Any abstention, any? I'm sorry.
Get the ayes first and then.
Okay. Aye, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? I think we have everybody.
Objections now.
Okay, uh, I, is, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for that. Go back, Neil.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dennis. All right. Okay, next. Thank you very much, library. All right, now on to, uh, you're welcome. All right, Lake Surprise Revocable Trust. Um, what else do we have to talk about this? We just?
You have resolutions.
Yeah, okay, I, did everyone get the resolutions? I thought this is, you know, we're good, right? Yeah, okay. So any, have any comment, there were the Lake Surprise resolution. This is that small subdivision. Anyone have any comments or questions on it? Motion to direct Ron to prepare the things that are already, oh, they're already prepared. Well, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Right, wait, first, you have two separate resolutions to act on. One is, let's accomplish the environmental review, adopt the negative secret declaration and separately, um, the approval of it.
Yeah. All right, let's, do you want to take them separately then? All right, let's, uh, can I get approval for a neg deck on, uh, the Lake Surprise application? Motion, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Neil, second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dennis. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstention, motion passes. And then on the resolution itself or the subdivision, can I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Neil, second.
I'll second that.
Unless, unless you weren't gonna.
No, no.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Uh, do we have anyone from Lake Surprise here? The applicant? No? Can I have a working pen, Cheryl? My current pen is dead. I will, thank you, sir. It's juicy, that's, all right, thank you. Let me just put my. Oh, that's, that is juicy, all right. All right, thank you, Cheryl. All right. And then finally tonight, Kornicki, uh, geez, Krasnicki, sorry. Um, discussion of the, effectively the traffic study. Um, why don't you go along on it since, um, uh, we have a number of letters we've received about the study. It would be useful to have that. Feel free to just give us the longer version.
Good evening. Sounds like we want to go straight.
Whatever word you want.
Straight to traffic.
No, I think, yeah, just, just to open, I would just say that, uh, since we were last before the board, um, we have updated the plans
uh, addressing comments of Ron's of the public from last month, uh, and of course of the boards. Uh, we've added plantings to the plan. We've submitted a SWIP, uh, to Ron and to the board, uh, which, which is under review. And of course, we've submitted, uh, the, the traffic report. Also, since we were last before the board, just kind of FYI, uh, we've received our first round of comments from DOT. So, uh, we'll be, uh, ready to respond and submit our stage two application on that, uh, very shortly. And we did receive Ron's, uh, latest memo today. Uh, and we can certainly respond to his remaining outstanding comments, uh, by the next meeting.
Ron, you want to, you want to highlight to those comments?
Sure, as the applicant indicates, the, uh, latest rebuttal includes, uh, a, a traffic report for the project that was requested by the planning board. It's also been, uh, at least three letters that have recently come in on, on, uh, from the public on the same issue of traffic. Uh, the public hearing was closed two months ago, back in May. Uh, and they're currently, uh, under review by DOT for their entrance improvements proposed. I would suggest that the traffic study be, uh, referred on the board's behalf to an independent consultant to evaluate, just for the benefit of the board. And at the same time, to transmit that information to DOT with the public comments that have been received, so that they might be aware of it during their review process.
Could you provide a little more guidance, maybe this is a legal issue to this board on the notion of an independent, uh, um, traffic? And we, we'll get to it after our questions, I think, but I just, let's, let's have the horse before the cart in this sense. What, what's the mechanism for hiring or directing the applicant to hire an independent? This is, uh, obviously, uh?
It would not be the applicant. It would be, it'd be a consultant.
Hire someone?
Yeah, they're similar as you've done with other major projects. Any, anyone that's had any, uh, concerns over traffic, certainly, um, Hudson Valley Shakespeare, uh, the Horton Road project. It's in an area of the town that's been subject of great concern over, uh, of, of traffic. And, uh, the board has previously used consultants just to evaluate from the board's, uh, perspective or your standing. The appropriateness of the study that was done and the findings that they have determined.
Yes, I, I'm, I'll, I'll admit, this is probably not a great, uh, uh, question to reveal in, in public, but I don't recall us using our, an independent traffic engineer. I, I know with Shakespeare, we use their traffic person. I don't recall that we used a separate.
You've used, um, AKRF for.
You're right, fair.
It's the same thing, except you have to decide on traffic engineers.
Yeah, okay, fair.
No, but AKRF has that capability.
Oh, so you can go right through AKRF?
Yeah, you can go right to AKRF. They've done that traffic study for you on multiple projects that have came before the board in the past.
Why, why don't we come to that decision after we hear from your, your, uh, traffic, uh, do you want to get anything else, though?
Uh, yeah, if, if I, if I might, I just, uh, I just want to point out, just make sure it's totally clear that, uh, the applicant has retained, a traffic engineer produced the report that's in front of you. That is going to be reviewed by the DOT and obviously by your board, your town engineer. So i- it's not as though this was just done, it's put out into the world and that's the end of it. There, there is further review and I'll highlight that it's gonna be reviewed by DOT, but of course, it's your prerogative to have your, uh, your, uh, independent review as well. So that we're completely open to that and just want to make sure it's clear that there will be a further review.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Mark Nedolny. I work for Creighton Manning. Uh, we're out of Albany. I'm an associate and senior project manager there. I've been there almost, uh, 24 years. I've been doing this quite, quite a while and I've worked with actually AKRF in the past and DOT in the past, getting highway work permits. So going through that process is, is not foreign to me and will go through that process if, uh, as we, as, as needed. As noted, we were asked to conduct the traffic assessment for the site. Um, it's, you know, just under 15,000 square feet of a mix of warehouse and office with direct access to Route nine. Um, so the first thing we did, we wanted to go out there, we took a look at the site, we took a look at Route nine to see what the existing conditions were. We installed an, an automatic traffic recorder on Route nine, right adjacent to the site, which are those tubes that you see that you drive over. That gives us, um, typical, uh, historical traffic volumes on the road that's passing the site. So we know how, how much traffic is actually passing the proposed site driveway. It also gives us classification speed data. So we do know, even though the, the area right in the vicinity of the proposed project is a transition zone between a 45 and 55 mile an hour zone, the operating speed at that location, which is the 85th percentile of speed, which means if you have 100 people that pass the site, the 85th person passing that site, that is 55 miles an hour in both directions. So that is what you, you generally design your, your, a roadway and a driveway for, is that, is that operating speed, which is 55 miles an hour. And so the, you know, the next thing we wanted to do is make sure that, uh, access to the site is acceptable. And basically, we want to look at site distance and site lines from the, the proposed site driveway. And so you, you look looking left and looking right in order to exit the site, you look straight coming off of Route nine to make the left turn on. You look at stopping site distance to make sure that there's adequate site, uh, site distance to come to a complete stop if someone comes and, uh, pulls out in front of you, which is the sort of most critical piece. Um, those, that site distance assessment indicated that we're, you know, we would recommend doing some clearing along the vegetation on the site frontage, just to ensure that those site lines are maintained, looking right. Looking left, there is a utility pole that can get in your way a little bit, but it does not critically limit your site distance. And it's pretty typical on any DOT road that those utility poles are there and vehicles will move forward as necessary to sort of see around that, that utility pole. So it's not like a, a large bush or a tree that, that's in the way. It's a, it's a fairly, uh, thin pole. Um, so for those reasons, the site distance, we feel is adequate, uh, for the, the design speed, for the 55 mile an hour design speed. The next thing we needed to do was determine how much traffic this site was gonna, is gonna generate. Um, so you generally go to something called the ITE Trip Generation Handbook, which looks at other similar sites. So they have a land use code for a, uh, what is it called? It's a specialty trade contractor. And they look at other similar uses to determine how much traffic they generate based on their square footage. And so you can apply those rates to this site. And I know the applicant has provided some, uh, employment data, uh, well, how much, how many employees they expect to have at these sites. But we use ITE Trip Generation Manual, which is the industry standard. And we determined that a facility of this size, square footage wise, would generate approximately 25 trips during the morning peak hour. So let me back up a little bit. When we do a traffic study, we, we look at worst-case scenarios. And the worst-case scenario on Route nine is during the morning commute and during the afternoon commute and on the weekend and a midday Saturday. So we look at those worst-case times, uh, times when people are generally driving to work. And so a, a facility of this size, when people are coming to work in the morning, that worst-case hour, we look at, this facility would generate about approximately 25 trips based on the ITE manual. During the PM peak hour, it's, it would be approximately 28 trips and on a, on a Saturday around 19. Now, those are actually fairly conservative compared to the number of employees that they anticipate on that site. So I feel like the, the, um, analysis we presented is, is conservative, uh, moving forward. Uh, so the next thing we wanted to do is, now that we know how much traffic is gonna, uh, get, be generated on the site, we then do an analysis of the driveway itself to see if adequate operations will be provided. Um, and so since we know how much existing traffic is on Route, on Route nine, we can then determine in what direction traffic is going to leave the site. And we also look at other developments in the project area. And we do know that, uh, the Danes Lumber is, you know, has been approved just south of this site. So we also add a traffic associated with that onto the existing traffic. So we have this sort of future condition. And then we assign a traffic that is being generated by the site and do an analysis of the driveway. And that is done, be, done using a, a computer program that, that estimates how much delay a motorist will experience exiting the site. And the amount of delay you, you experience, essentially you get a grade like you would get in school. It's an A through F grade, meaning A is very good and F is very bad. So it depends on how much, how much delay you would experience. So if you were experiencing less than 10 seconds of delay trying to get out of that site, that'd be a level service A. If it's over, you know, 60 seconds, and you're waiting a minute to get out, that's a level service F. This driveway, the average delay during the, during the peak hours, so worst-case time, morning, afternoon and Saturday, is a, is about a level service C to D. So those are considered acceptable operating conditions. You have to remember, this is on a private driveway, so it's not like it's impacting, you know, public traffic trying to get off of a side street. It's really the, the traffic coming off of the driveway. And then as traffic enters onto Route nine, then it dissipates as it goes north, some goes north, some goes south. We would anticipate about 65% will go north and 35% will go south. So as, as traffic leaves the site, it starts to dissipate throughout the roadway network. So based on that analysis, the levels of service at the site driveway are acceptable. So we wouldn't recommend any sort of, uh, you know, a traffic signal or something like that to get vehicles in and out of the site. So that's a, a basic rundown of the analysis we provided. I do know that the, that the board was provided with some comments from the public. Um, one was just about the process you had talked about earlier, whether or not, you know, does the- the applicant provide the traffic study, and why are they providing the traffic study? Well, the board does have the ability to ask an outside consultant to review our work. It essentially happens almost on every single report we do. Someone else looks at it, and they concur, or, you know, asks us questions, and we respond to those comments. And we'd be more than willing to do that if necessary. This is a fairly low generating facility in terms, in the grand scheme of traffic. This is not generating a lot of traffic. You know, you're talking, you know, around 25 trips, you know, over the course of an hour. That's one trip every two minutes, less than every two minutes. So just put that in perspective, sit out the driveway, you know, it's one car every two minutes. So that just gives you a sort of a level of magnitude of how much traffic this is going to generate. And again, you know, based on the employee numbers, you know, we're probably fairly conservative. There was a comment about a concern that a vehicle traveling southbound, making a left turn from Route 9 onto East Mountain Road, could create an issue where a vehicle tries to use the shoulder to sort of come around that vehicle, waiting to make a left turn onto East Mountain Road, and would that create a sort of sight distance issue and create an issue with traffic exiting the site? So I took a look at that. The comment also had a sort of a sketch diagram, and it sort of showed the issue. So I actually went onto the aerial, and I'm going to provide you some mapping here of what that issue is. And it shows you what a left turn vehicle is making, you know, the sort of auto turn, what we call an auto turn, how someone is making a left turn onto East Mountain Road. And the space for a vehicle to sort of bypass that is only about seven and a half foot shorter, and there's a guy there on that corner. So in order to navigate that movement, you're going to, either you're going to clip the back of the car, especially doing it, you know, the comment talked about someone doing that at 55 miles an hour. And quite frankly, doing that, what I'm showing you is the vehicle behind it is doing 45. There's not enough room for someone to do 45 miles an hour to sort of get around that car and actually stay on the road unless you're driving down the shoulder all the way. So the vehicle's going to have to slow down in order to get around someone making that left turn. That's point number one. So they're not going to be going 55 or 45 if they try to sneak around, the shoulder's just not wide enough. The second issue, which I think is the, which really renders the common moot, is that if someone's waiting to make a southbound left turn, why are they waiting to make the southbound left turn? That means there's northbound traffic opposing them, because they've got to wait for a gap. And if there's northbound traffic opposing them, that also means people are not going to be able to exit the proposed site driveway. So there's no, there would be no one exiting the driveway anyways at that point, so no one's going to be making the left out of the driveway if someone's making a left at that intersection. So that condition really isn't going to happen in the future. So, you know, I did take that seriously, and that's why I went through, you know, these further steps to make sure that that safety issue wasn't a real issue that we should be concerned about. And from our point of view, that we didn't feel that that would really, you know, warrant us changing anything with the proposed driveway, the location of the proposed driveway. And that was the only comment that I really remember that I can address. If there's other things you want me to address, I can do that as well, but that's pretty much the summary of the traffic site to date.
Okay, thank you. Board members' questions?
I have one.
Please.
Or a couple, actually. I've been driving that road for well over 40 years, trying to make that left-hand turn. I've had tractor trailers pass me on the right-hand side doing 55 plus. So it can happen. And it's just, just waiting for, you know, the time to make that turn is incredible at times.
I'm not doubting that you've seen people do that, but like I said, if there is northbound traffic, stopping someone from making that southbound left, that means people cannot make the left out of the driveway. So again, if that's happening, you're not turning out of the driveway anyways.
Yeah, well, I've seen people try to do a quick get on the road, squeezing in, threading that needle, so...
So that's an existing condition on all of, on Route 9? So it's, you know, you can't design...
It's not to be oversimplifying it, that, so it's just my comment, my observation. I'm sure there might be a couple of the people in this room that have gone down that same path, so.
Other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Like Dennis, I live off this road too, but I was just wondering if your analysis includes any kind of triaxle trucks or tractor trailers instead? It looks like just your average sedan that was, just by this drawing, you know...
Waiting to make the left?
No, just in general, in terms of the grading and the analysis that you've done. Did you do it based on triaxles as well that could be exiting the site or turning onto 9?
So based on the trip information that provided by the client, this is not going to be a heavy generator of trucks. It's not like a mine or a distribution center. There will be the odd, you know, oil, you know, heating well truck or delivery truck. And so the sight distance for a truck is greater than it is for a passenger car. But the available sight lines are fairly good, and there's adequate sight lines for a truck to make that left turn out, especially, and for the critical sight distance which is stopping, there is very good sight distance on Route 9 along that roadway. So while the report does not specifically get into sight distance for a truck, just because it's not a truck-driven facility, there would be adequate sight distance for a truck to turn out of that driveway. You know, so I mean, we could amend the table to do that for a combination truck or a single-unit truck, and the conclusion would still be the same, there is adequate sight distance for those types of...
Yeah, I was thinking more in the lines of the truck, the speed in which the truck exits the site. You know, if you're pulling out in a tractor trailer or a triaxle, it's going to take much longer to build up momentum to get onto 9.
Right, so...
I mean, I understand that the sight distance is fine, that's...
Well, and that's what the sight distance is based on. So the sight distance is saying that a tractor trailer takes, I'm going to say, nine seconds to make that left turn, or a vehicle maybe takes five. So a vehicle only needs 600 feet of sight distance to say, okay, I've got a long enough gap to make that left. Well, a tractor trailer needs 900 feet at that speed to make that left. So if you can see 900 feet, you can say, okay, I've got enough of a gap or enough of room to make that left. So that's why the sight distance is the critical piece for that, so you can see far enough that there is that big enough gap.
Right. Dennis, please.
Just another question regarding exiting your site, truck leaving, large tanker trucks, say. I'm not, I still don't have a clear understanding of the size of the trucks that are going to be leaving that site. If they're going there and leaving the site, making a right-hand turn going north, will there be any situation, and I see it all over the place, where they cross over the double yellow line on the southbound side?
Where they off-track into the opposing lane? So this, as has been noted, this is going to go through DOT review, and the way that the driveways for DOT, that in order to get a highway work permit to build a driveway on a state road, the radius of that driveway has to, you know, meet certain standards so that the truck does not need to off-track into the opposing lane, and they're wide enough to make that turn without, like you said, you know, off-tracking into the southbound lane.
What you're indicating here, this driveway...
I just asked someone just to throw something on there. That wasn't so very small. That's not the way it's going to be designed.
Because just eyeballing...
That is not designed, that was just me to show you where the approximate location of the driveway is, just to give you an idea of where it's going to be. But that's not designed to a DOT spec. It was literally just lines on paper.
If I could just point out quickly, we have provided in our site plans maneuvers, and that's per the DOT standard vehicle maneuvering. So in this case, we're using WB50 truck, which is a large multi-axle truck.
Has that been submitted?
That's been submitted, yeah. This has been in the site plans for a while now. That basically proves out, I think we also show a, yeah, we show a fire truck, and then we show the WB50, which is a standard truck that you would, a large truck that you would model for part of the DOT permitting process.
So where is a truck making a left-hand turn going north?
So it's coming in from, it's coming in from...
No, where is exiting the site?
Yep.
Making, okay, go ahead.
Sorry. So, yeah, we're coming in, we're making the right, we're showing that it can maneuver through the site, turn around, come out, and then make the left turn back onto Route 9 southbound.
I'm talking about making a right-hand turn going north. Is that indicated?
We can add that maneuver.
That's what I was concerned with.
Sure, yeah, we can add that maneuver.
Approaching into the southbound way.
Yeah, you know, we did the right entrance, so it's just kind of like a mirror image of the same thing. If it can make the right in, it should be able to make the right out. So we have the right entrance, but we can certainly add the right exit.
And the reason why I bring it up is, because I can't tell you how many times where I would be making a right-hand turn going off the south road or the north road, going north to double yellow line, and all of a sudden, I'm making the turn, and there's somebody passing somebody on the double yellow, and having close...
Yeah, I mean, listen, the best we can do is design the driveway to the DOT spec and to make it adequate to make the maneuver comfortably. Can we account for every, you know, sloppy driver or sloppy maneuver?
No, I understand.
But, yeah, we can definitely show that maneuver, we can show that that can be comfortably made without hitting the curb or going off the, you know, going over the yellow line.
And DOT, you know, you could provide a mountable curb so that, you know, the truck could, you know, mount the curb even though, you know, in order to maintain the spec to where it should be, but if they need a little bit more of a turn radius, you can have a mountable curb or maybe a painted hatched area to allow them to do that.
I could appreciate that. I'm just taking it also into consideration, human nature. Not every truck driver is an ace, so it's a realistic concern, so.
Other questions, board members? Heidi, please.
Well, I just wanted to comment, I agree with everything Dennis and Joe have raised, and some of those comments, you know, were raised by the public in letters about the slowest speed of possibly of trucks that contain oil. But also, it's really unusual for us to see, I believe, at least in the time I've been on the board, language like what's in here, where the sight lines are less than desirable but not critically limited. I, we don't see that. I don't, I haven't seen that ever, actually, I don't think, in a traffic report that we've received. So that just is, I guess that's a further reason for us to take a fresh look, because, I mean, obviously, you're not going to cut down the utility pole, but we don't really see that much, I don't think. I don't recall it.
So the sight distance analysis is done from a fixed point, 14 and a half feet back from the travel lane. That's just average of where people stop. However, in all sorts of situations, in, you know, the village and towns, if there's on-street parking, vehicles will move up an extra foot or two, and their vehicles aren't extending into the roadway, they just get a little closer to see around an obstruction like that. So again...
Like poking out into the road?
It's not going to be poking, that's the thing, is when you're 14 and a half feet back, the front of your vehicle's not on the edge of the road, you've still got maybe five or six feet. So maybe you take another one or two feet from that, and you're still not into the driveline, you're just a little bit closer than the average driver. We're talking about average drivers, 14 and a half feet back from the edge of the pavement. It's just, that's just, industry standard is 14 and a half feet back from the edge of the travel lane, so we don't change that. However, if you take a step forward, you can see around that pole, which is what every driver will do. They'll, you know, move up that extra foot. The front of their car is not in the driveline, it's just maybe an extra foot that they normally wouldn't have done if it wasn't there.
Or a foot further back.
Or further back, yeah.
Is there another place where you could put the driveway where it wouldn't have that obstruction?
Well, there's utility poles on both sides of the driveway, so if you move it the other way, then you could potentially get into the other utility pole.
And I want to remind the board that the location of the driveway, before we started any of this process, was at the prescription of DOT, who we met with on the site, showed the situation, at that time, what was the concept plan, and they gave us a very specific dimensional relationship to the Danes Lumber driveway, to this driveway, and that is what has driven the location of the driveway, came directly from DOT to the foot.
And so, and when I say, so the guidelines, they're guidelines, they're not hard and fast, you have to do this. It's not a shallow requirement to meet sight distance. It's a shallow requirement to meet certain types of sight distance, which is stopping, which is like, you've got to be able to stop or else you have an issue. So because every driveway in the world is never going to meet the recommended guidelines, because there's vertical curves, there's horizontal curves, so sometimes they don't meet them, and we're not going to, you know, push that under the rug. We want to call that out to the board and say, look, you know, this is not, you know, does not meet those guidelines, but it's not critically limited. So that is language I've used for 24 years. You may not have seen it, but it's something that we've put out there because we want the board to know, is that this is less than the recommended guidelines, but it's not to the point where there's going to be a critical issue out there that someone could, you know, and what those guidelines are for is that, so someone traveling on Route 9 does not have to slow up at all when someone's making the left turn out. So say you're a little short, well, maybe someone has to go from 55 miles an hour down to 50 because the sight distance is a little less. Well, you're not going to create an accident over that. You've just inconvenienced the mainline driver that's going five miles over the speed limit anyways to slow down to what the speed limit is. So again, these are recommended guidelines, and it's, they're not shallow conditions, and that's just, you know, that's what we do as traffic engineers, we make sure we try to put the driveway in a spot where it's not going to create a dangerous situation, and this location would not be a dangerous situation.
Is there anything you could do to mitigate that lack of desirability of it? And the fact that it's a C or a D? I mean, I don't know. I'm hoping we don't have to approve a lot of CDs. A D is like low grade, you know? That's a low grade in life.
So if you went to DOT, DOT guidelines are, have pretty much state that, you know, level service D or better is acceptable. And again, we're talking about the site driveway itself, so this is not the general public. This is going to be his employees experiencing a level service D, so...
But you see, it affects everybody else. Like, it affects every one of our children that's driving down Route 9 every day. Because if they have, if the employees have a problem, so does all the other people driving in the road. I mean, besides the fact that I'm concerned about the employees and certainly don't want anything to happen to any of them, and would very much prefer not to approve a project that endangers the employees, I also realize, it's just obvious, that if the employees are endangered in some way, so is everybody else on 9.
So the level service D doesn't mean anything by danger. It's just the amount of delay they're going to experience. So if they have to wait 25 seconds to leave their driveway, that's not a dangerous situation, and this is, it's a fairly low generating use. So you've got other pizza parlors and restaurants all over Route 9, those are higher generators than this, and so there's not dangerous situations with those types of uses. So this is a lower generating use, and those other facilities all up and down Route 9 have, you know, their driveways, they're going to have a very similar operation. And again, it's not impacting the public, it's impacting his employees, and his employees may know, you know what, I work, and when I work in Albany, I don't go down to Albany at 7:30 in the morning because I was hit traffic. I go a little earlier in the morning. So, you know, if his employees have a flexible schedule and they feel like, well, it takes me 45 seconds to get out of my driveway, out of the driveway, maybe I'll come in 15 minutes earlier, so it's a little easier to get in and out. So there's ways that employees will mitigate their own delay by leaving earlier or later in the day. But again, I guess I want to highlight that the level service D is not an unsafe condition, it's just a condition that his employees will be aware of, that when they go to leave the facility, on average, they may have to wait, you know, 20 to 25 seconds to make their turn in order to find an adequate gap.
Others?
Well, there's one other thing I wanted to raise, which is, are you aware that there could be a lot of increased traffic on Route 9 for whatever, next half a year at least, because they're going to close the Breakneck Tunnel and make it one lane? And so the expectation, so I could give you an article from the local paper, but I think it's important to consider that, and who knows how long it lasts? DOT is closing, that's a DOT project related to the Fiora Trail, they're going to close one of the lanes in the Breakneck Tunnel, so all that traffic is presumed, according to the local paper and I think what everybody thinks around here, all that traffic will be shutted onto Route 9. So that's a relief, so like where, when you measure the traffic, may not be particularly representative of what the traffic situation is going to be for probably, I don't know. They were supposed to start the project in July, hasn't started, so who knows when it starts exactly, or who knows how long it takes? Supposed to take four months, but could take a while.
Well, so this project isn't, would potentially be built...
Not going to start until after.
Until 2026, so, you know, it's probably going to occur afterwards.
So the intention is for construction to start in the fall. It's going to take at least a year for the thing to be built, so I don't think the overlap will be significant.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
So look, let me, I wanna say two things. Uh, one, uh, which, did, did you receive the, the public's letters?
We did, yeah. And I think Mark acknowledged the comments there.
The, 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 the common refrain from the few notes is the size of the trucks and their speed coming out. And for better and for worse, and I'd say for worse, you are the, I don't know, sixth or seventh applicant we've had, uh, in the last, probably, how long, Heidi, how long have you been on the board? Five years? Was it four years before, right before COVID?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think during Heidi's tenure, we've had, before your tenure, I don't know why, we didn't really have Route 9. But yeah, um, it started with, um, CRS, which is yet to be developed, but at the top, south of, um, 301. And it's continued on and on. The, uh, the, uh, truck trailer called, humorously enough, River View Industries, uh, Danes Lumber, your neighbor to your-
South-South.
Yes. And then your neighbor to the east, which was, we had a related set of discussions, the, whatever that facility is, it's right on the inside of East Mountain Road North.
Oh, yeah, the, sure.
Yeah, whatever that is. We, we've, over and over again, we've had this conversation. And so I, I, I struggle because I, I hear the public. I absolutely do. One of the, one of the authors of the, these letters was significantly hurt herself in an accident close to where Hudson-Holland Reserve is gonna be. And so I, these are not just heartfelt comments. They're physically felt comments. And so you are unfortunately the seventh, sixth, seventh, one of these. We don't have a lot of degrees of freedom. Um, but I think we, we have a responsibility to figure out whether the public, uh, public's concerns are valid and what we can do about it. I'll let Steve talk about what degrees of freedom we have, but I don't think they're great because, again, we obviously are a board, we're not, we're not a, we're not a rubber stamp and we're not a, um, a professional staffer. So we're, we're on this board for purposes of our perspectives as well as our, uh, as well as our thoughtfulness. So we do have opinions, but we also have a code we have to live with in. So I, Steve, I don't know if you wanted to just talk a bit about what, what, uh, what flexibility we do or don't have as a board on this topic.
Well, the project is subject to review under SECR. And one of the things that you can consider under SECR is incremental or aggregate impacts of development. That's not to say that you can ask one property owner to cure impacts that are caused by many other sites, but you certainly take into consideration the overall circumstances of a property based on things that are happening in other sites. In other words, if you have a project that's being developed and you know that there are three other projects that are being developed up the road, you can take into consideration and seek review, SECR review, what the aggregate impacts of those proposed future developments will be in regard to the approvals that you're issuing for this particular site. But that aside, outside of SECR review and, and looking at the aggregate impacts like that, um, you're really pretty much limited to looking at the, um, safe and, um, and practical development of this site under good and accepted engineering practices and the provisions in the code. One of the issues here, a big issue here, is not only traffic, but the safety of the ingress and egress on the roadway. It's been pointed out that DOT is particular about where the driveway will be and that very well, I, I don't doubt that is the case. However, if the property owner is limited in regard to where they can put their driveway access onto a roadway and that access has a potential adverse environmental impact like traffic safety, it may limit the degree to which the property can be developed. For example, if you have too many truck trips for the driveway to be safe, you may have to limit the number of truck trips, either as a condition or as limiting the size of the development. One of the things you have, um, before you, and I, I read through it to the best of my ability, I'm not a, a traffic engineer, obviously, is the report that was given by Creighton Manning. And it's a good and thorough report. Creighton Manning does a good job, but Creighton Manning's not infallible. And Creighton Manning is retained by the applicant. There's a necessary implicit bias in that. And I would suggest, as your, your engineering consultant has recommended, that you have an independent review of the traffic, um, study that's been given, have a report that's been given to you and the traffic impacts, um, of having the driveway placed as it apparently has to be placed by a traffic engineer. Ron's a civil engineer. He can give you insights on many things and probably to some extent, traffic. But this is the type of thing that I'd suggest you really need to have an independent, in-depth review to report back to you as to whether they're spot on and they're absolutely right, or that there's some issues that they're either off on or need to be looked into for.
How, how is that financially managed? Is that paid for by the town or the applicant?
They pay for all consultants.
Yeah.
It's passed through.
Okay, uh, do they, do they need to ascend to that?
No.
No, okay. Uh, board members, now Ron and Steve have both suggested we have an independent traffic consultant. Without any slight to you, sir, uh, I think that's sort of the tenor of the, the board. So, uh, folks, would that be something you'd wanna consider?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we need to vote on that. Can I have a motion then to, uh, hire independent, uh, traffic engineer to be determined at a later date in order to validate or invalidate or augment the comments raised by the existing traffic report?
Neil, in part of that, I'm being picky here. I apologize, but, um, the town board has already retained AKRF as our planning consultant. You don't need to hire them. All you have to do is vote to refer this to AKRF for, uh, engineering, uh, traffic engineering review.
Let me, let me belay my earlier motion. I'll restate it to say, to refer, to retain or refer, I guess, probably, because they're already on, to refer to AKRF in their specialty in traffic for this topic?
I'll make that vote.
Thank you, Dennis. Second, thank you very much, Joe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes. Adam?
So regarding this process, uh, the timing, I think, uh, as I mentioned before, we got Ron's memo. I think we can, without doubt, address all of his remaining comments with the next meeting. Um, our hope and our, our intention was to ask if the board thought it appropriate to have Ron at least draft resolutions. We've already gone-
Very, look, you, you don't know Glenn Watson probably that well, but you are a student of Glenn Watson, even in his absence. So, uh, no, we don't do that. Uh, thank you for asking. And you're a good advocate for your client. He's doing a good job for you. But we, I try not to do that, but when there's open issues. So we're not gonna do that at this point. In fact, I think we're gonna probably have a discussion about it, uh, at the next meeting. But thank you for asking. It's the right thing to do.
So if I can take the latter part of my, my comments out of it and go back to the timing of said review?
Yeah.
Is that something that's gonna be done in the next month? Is that-
I, I don't know. And what's gonna tie into the next topic of conversation, which is whether we're gonna have an August meeting. So I don't, and I suspect we're gonna have to provide a couple of select, specific questions for the traffic engineer to identify. One is which the, can it be made sa- actually, obviously to validate all the pieces you're talking about, plus can it be made safer? Uh, what ways, I suspect, what truck size matters?
I mean, one obvious, to me, what seems obvious, because sometimes we suggest things for applicants to consider in terms of mitigation. I mean, one thing that seems really obvious to me is if there weren't any oil trucks, if there weren't trucks containing oil. I mean, that might make people feel a lot more comfortable because, you know, I think oil trucks, as we've seen from letters, heavy, slow. I mean, obviously, if there's an accident, that's really, really bad. Um, I don't know. I think maybe that's a possible thing to just think about. I, I don't know if that renders the project impossible, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to have Cheryl or maybe Ron, for that matter, just compile the questions the board has asked, uh, in the last 20 minutes, as well as the couple of points raised, which I don't, I think are actually, um, already been covered. But just let's catalog the full list of those questions raised by the public in their letters. And let's just, just digest that down or distill that down so we can share it with AKRF and they can, as they do their, their review or their independent traffic today, they can also address these particular questions. So if you wouldn't mind going back to the tape and let's provide that. I think that's a fair, fair question, different types of trucks, et cetera. But we don't need to solve the, the exact questions. The answer to your question about timing is, my guess is that's gonna take past the next four weeks. It's my guess. I don't know. Uh, it's summer, I don't know. But I think, I wanna talk to my colleagues here in a second about, we'll definitely do it in September, maybe it's August. I don't, I just don't know.
I'll coordinate with Cheryl on armed.
Yeah, thank you for your flexibility. Thank you for your patience. This is an important process for both you and for us. Uh, and let's be honest, the corner you bought has two other projects that, to Steve's point earlier, two other projects that have come in short order before yours, to your east and your south, that is making this little, little corner that was relatively quiet a few years ago, kind of busy. So it's a, takes a lot of attention for folks. So thank you for that. Other comments, questions from the board on this matter? Okay, new business? Any new business? Okay, August meeting. Would you like an August meeting?
I have no problem having an August meeting.
Okay, hard, hard man, hard, hard-working man.
Because everything gets backed off.
Okay.
And if you, if somebody wants-
One for yes.
If one, somebody wants to take a day off, take it off.
That's one for day off. Heidi?
I, I'm around.
That's one, two for day off, two for no day off. Two for working man. Joe?
I don't think I'm gonna be around.
Joe's not around?
I wouldn't mind taking it off.
He would like to take off? All right, so is the, the board chair has to, has to break ties. Two for working, two for not working? You know what I'm gonna do, ladies and gentlemen? I wanna respect your summer. I wanna embrace how hard you've worked. You've just approved the Shakespeare Festival after 40 years. You're getting August off, ladies and gentlemen. So I'm sorry to say, take August off. Don't, don't come to work. I appreciate the hard work. You're getting a little extra something. I think Bob may actually increase your annual, uh, Hudson Hills, wherever you give us. You may get more than 10 bucks this year.
I think I might not be here in September.
Why?
I'm trying to get away.
Oh, what's wrong with August? Everyone goes away in August.
I can't wait till the kids go back to school.
Okay, meeting, uh, motion to adjourn? So moved. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Goodnight.